Good evening, folks. Good evening, good evening, good evening. At this time, I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Hinkley Township Board of Trustees to order on Tuesday, February 21 at 6:30 PM. Please call the roll. Here?
Here, here.
Like to ask everybody to stand under the flag.
Well, I think, I think we will start.
You're okay with that? Okay.
I'm just saying.
That's fine. We'll go through this really quick. Request resolution to enter in a one-year agreement effective February 2023 to February 2024 with One Eye Work scheduling software, a cost of $1,140 to replace our current scheduling software.
Second.
Second by Augustine, Augustine?
Yes.
Asherall?
Yes.
Sweatic, yes.
Request appropriations not to exceed $900 to repair Squad 37 from the manufacturer Burgess Ambulance Incorporated. There is a ground wire, the main ground wire needs to be replaced.
Second.
Second by Augustine, Augustine?
Yes.
Asherall?
Yes.
Sweatic, yes.
Except, please accept Noah Millman's resignation effective immediately as his standards and practice did not work out for him here at the Fire Department.
Second.
Second by Augustine, Augustine?
Yes.
Asherall?
Yes.
Sweatic, yes.
Thank you. Request to hire firefighter paramedic Mariah Baylog at a rate of 1478 per hour on a one-year probationary period effective immediately.
Second.
Second by Augustine, Augustine?
Yes.
Asherall?
Yes.
Sweatic, yes.
You want to swear them in now, one at a time, or you want to get through all this and then?
Let's do all those and then.
Sound great. Request promotion of Acting Assistant Chief Sean Barrett to fully Acting Assistant Chief Sean Barrett at a rate of 2144 per hour effective immediately.
Second.
Second by Augustine. Sean, you want to keep your name because he? Okay. Augustine.
Oh, that's right. We did.
Did we talk about the pay scale?
Yes.
So just swear them in? Then, then let's get right to it. So Mariah's first for her oath of office.
I want to.
Yes, yes, you can sign those.
I'm Mariah Baylog.
I'm Mariah Baylog.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And will faithfully discharge the duties.
And will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of a volunteer fireman for Hinkley Township.
A volunteer fireman for Hinkley Township.
In Medina County, State of Ohio.
In Medina County, State of Ohio.
During my service in the Fire Department.
During my service in the Fire Department.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
You're going to swear in and then you get to stand on the table.
All right. I, Sean Barrett.
I, Sean Barrett.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And will faithfully discharge the duties.
Will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of an Assistant Fire Chief.
Of an Assistant Fire Chief.
For Hinkley Township in Medina County.
For Hinkley Township in Medina County.
State of Ohio.
State of Ohio.
During my service in the Fire Department.
During my service in the Fire Department.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Tom Kolar, come on down. All right. I, Thomas Kolar. Do solemnly swear. That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And will faithfully discharge the duties.
Faithfully discharge the duties.
Of a Lieutenant for Hinkley Township. In Medina County. State of Ohio. During my service in the Fire Department.
During my service in the Fire Department.
Congratulations.
Who's this young man?
So this is retired Captain Tibbetts from Fire Department. He was a chief commander of Engine 1, and he was my first boss. We've been friends since I got hired there and he's like a father to me.
Jared Solomon, last but not least. I haven't seen you like this. I, Jared Solomon.
I, Jared Solomon.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And will faithfully discharge the duties.
Faithfully discharge the duties.
Of a Lieutenant for Hinkley Township.
As a Lieutenant for Hinkley Township, sorry.
In Medina County.
In Medina County.
State of Ohio. During my service in the Fire Department.
During my service in the Fire Department.
After, yes. All our new lieutenants and our new firewoman lieutenants up here for?
The four of you not sworn in, just.
All right, everybody say Hinkley.
There is cake and refreshments that's going to be at the fire station after this.
Yeah, after this, you guys are sticking around the whole thing, right?
I'd like to be dismissed. Clear this, this round.
I just, I wanted to thank, because I see some other people here that interviewed, and I just want to thank everybody who took the time to interview for the lieutenant's position, because it was great having conversation and getting to know, getting to know everybody a little bit more who tried for that. So you guys all did fantastic. And congratulations.
Thank you guys very much.
Thank you all.
The next time we'll see them all will be buzzer day. Thank you for being here.
Does anybody else have anything for the chief before we cut him loose? This is your chance, guys. Come back for cake and refreshments back at the station, please. Bring some down tomorrow if there's, you know, for you guys. Thank you guys very much.
Thank you. Hey, Jen, do I give a copy to them normally, don't I?
One goes to me and then one goes to them.
Jeff already took his. The one for Martha, one for each person, right?
Yes.
Good to see you.
Bye.
I need, he used to be the fire chief.
Before, now, Morgan? I think he looks exactly.
It's gonna be like 20 degrees.
It was getting chilly before.
See you later.
Martha, please. And Jen, do you want to give this to all of our guests of honor? Thank you. Maybe we'll see you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Oh, they, they all are. Jeff, it's a little quieter. Now what are we going to do? Mom, come back.
All right, moving right along. Get back to business here.
Sorry, boss.
She's flipping.
Do we want to jump to police?
We, yeah, we do.
Okay.
And I can be really quick because, good evening, and I have nothing for this.
Thank you for being here.
Does anybody have anything for the police here tonight? Have a good evening.
Thank you.
They are dropping like flies.
I will talk to you Saturday if that'll work for you.
Friday or Saturday, yeah.
If you want to do breakfast Saturday, I'll even go.
Stop on by my house, tags and eggs.
Michael.
Does Mike have anything or is Mike leaving? Look at that grin.
Nothing. He came to get his title.
Oh, hi, it was good to see you. For sure.
Does anybody have anything for service?
No, thank you for being here.
Somebody who's on that I can hear on the virtual.
So.
There we go.
And I don't know, Elizabeth, I'm going to have you go next. Did you have anything that Mike needed to hear as far as this erosion plan?
I think we've talked it through, but if you want to hear just, just.
And if you want to, you can just sit down at the table. You don't have to stand.
For those who, those who don't know, this is Elizabeth Heiser from Metro Park.
Hi, senior restoration ecologist. I started last March in this position formerly with Swallow Water Conservation District in Cuyahoga County. Thank you for being here. It's nice to meet you. Of course.
You. Do you want me to pass on to Mariah?
Yeah, thank you so much. Yeah, so I'm just here tonight to bring up a potential project that we're looking at at the end of Eastland Road. We were made aware of some erosion going from Eastland Road into what we call Rising Valley. It's basically a huge, high-quality wetland complex that drains to a cold water stream in the east branch of the Rocky River watershed. And we own a property there that we call the Coochta property because we inherited it from the Coochta family. And so at the end of that road, basically the stormwater is just kind of blowing through there. So what I have attached here is just some photos from the end of the road last summer, and you can see kind of this head cut forming. So it's just moving closer and closer and closer to the road. So we'd like to stop that. And we'd like to, you know, initially we thought, okay, do we just address the erosion? But we have this property neighboring it where we have an opportunity to potentially reroute the stormwater runoff and kind of address it at the source. So instead of letting it still blow through and whatever repairs we do might get, you know, thwarted, the thought is if we can reroute the stormwater into the Coochta property on Metro Park's property, maybe create like a stormwater basin or a stormwater wetland to slow that water down, let it settle before we reroute it towards a better little tributary that will reinforce. So that's our current concept. It's completely conceptual level. This is just Elizabeth going out and saying, what can we do about this erosion? But wanted you guys to be aware, since it would involve your stormwater pipe or the county stormwater pipe, and just wanted to see if there was any other ideas, if you had any issues with the concept of the project or just thoughts. And run it by you, let you know that we are trying to actively seek funding. We've let H2Ohio know about the project because they're reaching out for good projects. This could certainly impact water quality and be a, be a big win if we were to address this for that tributary to east branch of Rocky River. So I think it's a good project for H2Ohio and to bring in some money, fingers crossed. But happy to answer any questions about that. Basically just attached photos, concept level with map. And then also we're getting this put into the watershed planning plan. It's called the Nonpoint Source Implementation Strategic Plan for the headwaters of the east branch of Rocky River. And so Cuyahoga Swallow Water will put the project in that plan. So that's just the project summary sheet that they submit to Ohio EPA. And that makes us eligible for different funding sources to address the problem.
Now, I know this, this is an odd spot where part of it is like Richfield, part of it is Hinkley, and we're certain that this area where we're seeing erosion is Hinkley.
Believe so, right, Mike?
It's because I know I've walked it before and seen one Hinkley cone, and it said Hinkley on it, and I thought, huh?
Yeah, so maybe we should, we should verify, but my impression was it's Hinkley. And, and I should also mention, we're happy to do all the work in-house. So we do have trades team. It would just be wanting to make sure we have permission from our neighbors and partners. The neighbor on the north side of that, we would definitely want to let them know what's going on because the erosion is also occurring on their property.
Significant.
Oh, yeah, it's, it's not minor erosion. We're not talking about a little bit of sediment. I mean, we've got a big plume kind of moving into the, and trees falling in.
Yeah, wow.
That's why I would rather kind of try to reroute the water than just try to stabilize. But certainly we would work to get a consulting team on board that would make formalized recommendations, get us better cost estimates. These are, you know, educated guestimates at what it might cost, but want to get a little better, little better figures on those.
Elizabeth? The name of the road is actually Eastwood.
I knew I was going to get this wrong. I get geographically challenged.
That's okay. Yeah, I think Jackie had it as Eastman. I think it had a few different iterations.
And what do you guys prefer to call it? Eastwood Route Road?
Well, I, I've lived there for 60 years, so.
So we're going to let you name it.
She's partial to Eastwood.
Yeah.
Thank you for that correction, and I'll make sure I get that corrected on the sheet for. I have to admit, I was formerly Euclid Creek, not, not Rocky River Watershed Manager, so I'm still getting my bearings.
That goes over, all the way to Rising Valley is Hinkley, and part of it is simply Rising Valley. But then, that was always a ravine, but it was the erosion exacerbated by the install of the road in the grade there. So that water's running off the high side and just.
Thanks. It's good to have that historical and kind of perspective. You've seen it happening, whereas I'm just coming in. Whoa, that's a problem.
That was the road up until probably about 25, 24 years ago. The road ended at the top of the hill.
Oh, okay.
And then, then it was petitioned. It was never vacated. With. But no one ever lived on it. So, but then the road, the hard surface was put in, heading to the east there.
And there's old farm equipment dumped in this ravine?
Not that ravine, the neighboring ravine. So on the map, if you kind of look just to the south where the second green line is, there's some old farm equipment in there, and as part of our agreement to acquire the property, we received WRSP funds from Ohio EPA, and as part of that effort, we need to clean that up. So that'll be addressed before we would do any rerouting of water and stabilizing that stream. Yeah, there's some surprising stuff out there.
But you, you did not acquire the, the house, the, the property.
No.
Property with the two houses. We're talking about the property acquired.
It's.
About 2008.
I think 2012. So you can kind of see on this map, the green, this is kind of the parcel boundary there. There's a big gap where the houses. So they kept the house, and then we just got an access road, basically, and the rest of the farm property.
I would say most of it's pretty much on Hinkley, like 350 foot up road edge, so.
Okay, and we would be trying to keep most of the work out of the wetland complex. There's some really cool groundwater seeps and really rare plant vegetation once you kind of start to get into the wetlands. So other than removing sediment that came in, we really would be trying to keep the work kind of on the stormwater and stream side of it and not, once it gets down into the valley.
And you guys are wanting to tie into our basin, so divert this, divert the water then?
So basically, we'd like to take the existing stormwater drain, probably, probably two of them that would need to be routed. Instead of going straight to the ravine, reroute them into our property. And we would create like a stormwater basin or wetland.
Sock up the road on this one?
I think we could just make sure it connects here or connect it here if it's not already connected. But I feel like it's probably okay. But we would also request information about where these pipes are actually going to make sure we're, we're sure what they are, how big they are, so that the engineering team can be aware.
So if you divert it, are you looking at a retention basin or?
Yeah, probably more like a constructed wetland than a traditional retention basin. And we have an engineer in-house that could help with that if we weren't able to get funds to, to do consultant work on it. But yeah, basically create a retention area for it to kind of slow it down, soak it in. I had originally thought, let's repurpose the old farm ponds, but I guess there's some cool birds that hang out in those. So our natural area manager was like, nah, let's leave those how they are.
What are you estimating the amount of time to complete this?
Time to complete one to three years, hopefully. So, you know, if we were to hear from H2Ohio, hey, we've got money and we want you to spend it now. They, they really like a two-year timeline, which would be tight. You know, if we were to get it out for proposals and probably do design build would be my recommendation. So just get a team that would do both the design and the construction.
Quite an undertaking.
Oh, yeah.
And you guys said you want to keep this all in-house?
So originally, I was like, well, we probably do this in-house. We've got a team that can build stormwater control measures. We've got a team that can do some of the stream work. But if someone's offering us funding, certainly we're, we're willing to go out. But yeah, if we don't get funding, we would try to work it through capital. And I say that, I do not hold the purse strings. These are just ideal level.
And then like the tie points of the basins, whose responsibility is for maintenance at that point?
Yeah, so I would think the, in your right of way, still would be maintenance just for routine stormwater stuff. So if the basin clogged or whatever, but once it gets onto our property, we would be responsible for maintenance. That's my understanding.
Yeah, well, yeah. Say if it gets clogged on your end, it's still going to be going down the hill, so.
Yeah, yeah. So we, we would definitely be keeping an eye on it. You know, we really want to, from a stream and wetland perspective, it's important. This is one of our highest priorities right now, so from our natural resources side of it.
Mike, would you be interested in walking this with the Metro Parks to better understand exactly where it is and what they're doing?
We kind of checked it out today a little bit.
Did you?
It wouldn't hurt to have someone there.
To point out.
To kind of know more what they're wanting to do, especially tie points, especially if we got sock up the road, that's a big one.
I know.
Yeah, I'm guessing, you know, we'll let an engineer kind of speak to it. But, and once we got to that point where we would have someone coming in to do a formal design, we would certainly have, you know, meetings where we would include you, the county, whoever, whichever partners need to be there. We want to be a good neighbor, for sure.
Appreciate that. Mike is our expert, so we probably send him out first.
Yep, happy to meet you out there whenever works. We're actually working on trying to figure out how to address the farm dumping areas. So if we're going to be out there, we can just let you know if you want to join us.
Yeah, absolutely.
Great.
Okay, any other questions?
No, I appreciate your time, Elizabeth. Thank you.
I appreciate you guys letting me join the fun tonight.
Yeah, I, I just seem to notice where Metro Parks is, it became the plan to require Ironwood Golf Course. And I'm looking at this map. This road appears to be somewhat adjacent or near where Ironwood is. My question to you is if you even know what impact, if any, with any of this erosion mitigation have on the Ironwood Golf Course? And if Metro Parks does own it, would they be inclined to use that property to, I mean, if it, if it, if it works into the scheme for mitigating the erosion, would you be inclined to use that Ironwood Golf Course, since you would own it?
I am not privy to knowing what's going on with Ironwood right now. Our acquisition team is amazing, and they're always working on new acquisitions. So I'm not aware of that now, based on where my understanding of Ironwood is. Is it north of here?
It's north of that road.
So it would, so Rocky River is draining south at this point, so it kind of does a big use. So anything at Ironwood would be upstream of this. But certainly, from a watershed perspective, anything that's draining to Rising Valley, we want to make sure that it's, you know, as clean, as good water quality as possible. So, you know, if we're, if we're an upstream property owner to high quality, we're, we're definitely trying to do best management practices.
I'm just curious and not being critical, because I don't know enough about this stuff to even.
Yeah. No, it's certainly, you know, from a watershed perspective, everything's draining downhill. So Ironwood is certainly draining to this area, but is what we would call upstream of, of this. So this shouldn't be affecting that. But it could be exasperating if there were issues coming from there.
So I have a map in front of me.
Oh, yeah.
Trying to just try to put together what you're saying. So, so the idea is you own some of the property over there that was kind of draining a family. The end of Eastwood Road. It's starting to kind of wash away the road and washing into your wetlands, is the idea. So what you're trying to do is mitigate that.
Yeah, some kind of.
Basin and, and getting rid of water somewhere else, so it doesn't flood your wetland. You mentioned, I think, two organizations, H2Ohio was one of the ones.
H2Ohio is one of the funding mechanisms we're looking into. So that's the state's program for addressing nutrients. They're primarily focused on the western Lake Erie Basin, so algal blooms coming from agricultural runoff. But they were looking for statewide projects, and they're really in a, we need to get more projects on the ground mode right now. So we would be looking to them for funding potential. And then WRSP, I think, is the other one I mentioned. So that's another State of Ohio grant funding program. That's how we acquired the property. And so that one is a, it's unique to Ohio. It's related to state revolving funds. So you can get a sponsorship from, say, if Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District is putting in a new pipe and they have to take out a loan, they can take some of that interest and credit it towards restoration projects.
So, so what guide you, essentially? Do you have a book or you might have mentioned something while you were talking as well? What, what guides you?
So that's, so I've been in this position since last March, and I'm kind of tasked with park-wide 24,000 acres, over 1,000 miles of streams, prioritizing where we do work and where we do restoration or protection or preservation. And I work with our aquatics teams to come up with priority watersheds. So this is one of our priority watersheds because of the high-quality nature of it. So that, so in this case, it's a high-quality stream, it's got high-quality wildlife, aquatic wildlife, and it's got a threat that's impacting it. So all of those things work together to make it a higher priority.
Is there a book or is there a code or anything that you work off of or, you know?
I'm working on it, but we do have a.
You, with your expertise, you just saw that this wasn't an issue. Again, a way to mitigate it before it became a trigger.
Exactly.
Is that a document or a stage or environmental document that says, in this instance? Is that a document or a stage or environmental document that says in this instance?
So that on non-point source implementation strategic plan that I mentioned is a watershed plan. And there, those are specific to watersheds all over the nation. Um, so definitely that helps guide me. So I look to the local watershed plans to see if they have things that they're trying to address. So in this case, um, Rocky River in this watershed, they're looking to address streambank stabilization. They're looking to address, um, what we call impacted, basically anthropo- anthropo- anthropogenic use that is modified habitat. So trying to restore habitat. So this project aligns with their goals for this watershed as well. So yes, I look to our local watershed plans. I look to the Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District Master Plan. Uh, and then my knowledge from doing this work previously and what I'm trying to come up with internally is more of a Metro Parks watershed plan, which spans all of the different watersheds that we work in. But so we're in progress.
Sort of private property or anything like that. You ever you ever find your way onto that or?
No, I mean, certainly, we might mark upstream areas as opportunities for preservation. Um, and if someone were to say to my real estate team, hey, we have an opportunity, they can say, is this a priority watershed? Um, do we want to look into that more?
But but not, I mean, you have to acquire that or whatever.
Yeah.
Work with whoever it was.
Yeah, usually if a private landowner was looking to do good work in a watershed, I would steer them towards like the low it, local soil and water conservation district to get assistance, that kind of thing.
Who else? Thank you very much.
Yeah, I really appreciate the time and feel free to reach out to me. I have contact here. Happy to meet with Mike and mark the site and we'll keep you posted on progress and. Um, and where we go from here. Thank you so much.
Good luck.
Thanks.
Okay, Mike, and if you don't have anything else, uh, you're good to go as well.
Did you get her business card?
Yeah.
Perfect.
In my haste to get these folks out of here, I bypassed the approval minutes, so we can go ahead and do that now. Uh, I think the special minutes are straightforward. So move to approve the trustee special meeting minutes, uh, February seventeen, twenty twenty three.
Second.
Second by Ashwell, all in favor?
Aye.
And entertain changes to the trustee regular meeting of February seven, twenty twenty three.
I have a change on the second last paragraph of five, page five. Last sentence, it says, Ms. Augustine feels that the property owner should be granted a zero percent abatement for fifteen years through the township with negotiated terms. And I was, um, just reiterating that I had presented a hundred percent abatement.
That that's already.
That was corrected.
Okay.
Got that type of.
Um, and can we just add that that was, those were the terms that I had spoke about at the September twentieth meeting? Thank you, Jack, for getting that. I didn't see that. That's all I have.
Trustee Ashwell.
I have no changes.
Did you say the September twentieth?
Yes, twenty twenty two.
Good.
Mm hmm.
Uh, move to approve the trustee regular meeting minutes of February seven, twenty twenty three as amended.
Second.
Second by Ashwell, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Do you have the work session or do you want to take?
We do have the work session from when? Did you see that one, Jack?
Did it come today?
This afternoon, yeah.
I did not get down to that.
Let me see if I can find the date for you.
One, January tenth.
Thank you. Yep. I had no changes to those.
No changes.
Entertained a motion.
Motion to approve. What were the dates?
January tenth.
The special meeting minutes from January tenth.
Second.
Second by Augustine, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm gonna send these these two if you guys would sign them. Thank you, Nell. And that's the amended ones.
Um, did you vote on the February seventeenth meeting minutes or did you abstain?
We didn't do the February seventeenth, did we?
That's just a special meeting. That's what you you seconded.
Yes, I did, or? Yeah, she was, she was, she had an excuse absence.
She can still vote on them. You don't, you don't have to abstain from the meeting. I mean, whatever you want to do. Do you want to take a minute that you can? She can second the approval.
All right, sorry. I thought he said February seventh, so.
But that's the due date.
I.
There were two sentences.
Oh, no, the regular was the seventh, seventeen was the special.
Special, oh. Why won't it sound since I wasn't here?
Who seconded the work session? Was that you, Moni?
I did.
Too many sevens.
We are not the sevens.
Seven from February.
There you go. Thank you.
Zoning.
Thank you.
Very big announcement. The oath of office has been done for Mr. Robert Romanofsky, who was our new BZA alternate. That's all I have for zoning. I hope to do Bill Spelman's, um, at the first, um, zoning commission meeting in March, which I believe is March second. That's correct.
Cemetery?
I have nothing for cemeteries. Do you want me to continue on?
Please.
We have the CRA Housing Council, um, discussion and decision on the agenda. As you know, we had an opening on our CRA Housing Council and then we had an additional opening. And as soon as I got your email, I went ahead and asked Suzanne to make that, um, adaptation to the posting on the website. So we had three different, um, letters of interest come in. And I believe you have those in front of you. We had Nancy, and I can never say her name right, Mandalikis, Mandalikis.
Mandalikis.
And Denise Clag, who was mentioned at the last meeting, as well as Sean Pupera. Um, so you have those in front of you and we have two spots to fill because Diane Dermody agreed to stay on and Quentin Tift, um, was appointed last year and has agreed to stay on. So, um, wanted to get the board's thoughts on those three candidates for the two positions. And just a reminder that this is a volunteer position. Um, it's once a year. Martha used a roughly like a ten minute meeting.
Yeah, I I think the first thing you need to do is make a motion to accept my resignation.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to make a motion to accept the resignation of Martha Cathcart Wood from the CRA Housing Council effective, when was that email?
Probably about a week ago or after the meeting.
It was right after the meeting. What was that, February eighth?
Take any day before today.
February tenth, second. Thank you.
Second by Ashwell, all in favor?
Aye.
And then when you make a motion, you may get to fill my term.
Which they're both the same, correct?
Well, yours started last year.
Mine started last year.
Okay.
And I don't know when Jim started, so that's, uh, we'll do one to fill Jim Dolan's term and one to fill Martha's.
Did you get an answer on that question I asked you, Jack?
I did. Resident.
Okay.
Okay, so what are our thoughts on the three candidates?
Resignation?
Yes.
You did.
Um, I thought Nancy's was very proactive. Um, researching the ORC, researching, um, Medina County Economic Development. Um, I believe she said she reached out to Martha just to make sure she had a thorough understanding of the role. I thought she really went above and beyond for that, um, to make sure that it would fit with her schedule and that she could, um, dedicate herself to the term. So I was impressed with that. And the other two candidates, uh, I think that they are both absolutely acceptable, both of them. Meeting this letter again. Um, Denise has, um, experience working on these different boards. So obviously, she has, um, she has the experience needed. My only, um, my only comment I will make that I know I've made this before in the past is it's nice to see other people, I think, who want to, uh, participate in the community, be able to, um, do that where they're able to. And I know that Denise is on the Chamber of Commerce as well. So I do not think that's a strike against by any means. I just think that it's nice to give everybody an opportunity. And that's my only thought.
Jack?
For the first one, I will move to appoint Nancy J. Mandalikis.
Second.
What are we appointing them to?
To the.
To Martha's.
Position Martha is vacating on the, the CRA Housing Council Board.
Okay.
Seconded by Ashwell. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Um, well, I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion to fill the term of Jim Dolan's, um, with Denise Clag for the remainder of his term. I think that Denise offers a lot of, um, experience with economic development. Um, she has worked with Medina County planning on subdivision standards and she's, she knows our county inside and out leadership, Medina County graduate. She would be a great asset. Um, I think Martha even had kind of pointed that out at the last meeting.
Did you have any discussion with either?
No, we'll second discussion. On this one.
Second discussion.
I will second the motion.
The motion, okay.
So we have a motion before the board now for discussion. No discussion, all in favor?
Aye. Perfect. Thank you, guys. All right, um, wanted to give you a quick update. I had in my trustee corner that went out into the e-newsletter, um, that we were exploring water for the center of town, that we had the county come in, um, briefly had talked about grant options. And I had a resident reach out to me and say, hey, I work for a consulting company and we we do this. So I actually met with him and, um, had some really great conversation. I gave each one of you this proposal for professional services. I don't anticipate having a conversation, um, about this tonight, but I wanted to deliver it to you so that you could review it. Um, they are able to help us submit for grants. So this is similar to the company that we use for the fire department and I don't, you know, we've received over three hundred thousand dollars in grants through the, for the fire department because we use an outside consulting company that knows specifically how to write them and the language to put into them. Um, I did give you a copy, but it's a black and white, Jack. I can run another one for you if you'd like.
It's okay. I don't have any difficulty locating it.
I'll run another copy for you. Um, so I just wanted to give this to you so you could kind of take a peek at it and we can have further discussion at the next meeting, if that's okay with you. Uh, one of the things that they had said when I met with them is that when we talk to our citizens and business owners and town center, we really need to acquire letters of hardship, things that they're dealing with, that they, um, are are having difficulties with financially, physically, emotionally, whatever, you know, they're dealing with. And that would assist us in the grant writing process and make our grants much stronger. So I did put that in my trustee corner, a request to the public, and this is specific to Town Center. It's not for all of town. We've had discussion at length about how poor the water quality is is in Town Center. So just a little piece of information for you guys to hold on to for future discussion. Any questions on that before I move on?
No, I'll definitely read the, do you have, um, an electronic copy?
I do.
Send us?
Yeah, I do.
It would be, I would appreciate an electronic.
Okay.
Copy. I don't know.
Sure, thanks. I will do that and I can run copy for you too, if that's easier, whatever you want.
That's fine.
I will jot it down right now.
Okay. I mean, did they say like how many grants? Like you'd have to apply, I'm assuming for several.
She, if you look at the top, she advises the Ohio Public Works Commission and, um, there are some others, other things that she has in here. I mean, it's all outlined. She has previous experience working as an administrator for a municipality. And this was one of her jobs at that time was to work on grant writing and funding options. So, um, she comes with a plethora of experience and I think would benefit the township.
Okay, I will take a look at it.
It might just be a little more cost effective for us in the long run. Thank you for that. Um, I've got the resolution. Jack, I noticed this is on your agenda too. Do you want to read this?
You can. I don't care.
Okay.
I put it on mine. I didn't know that you were gonna put it on afterwards, so it's okay.
Um, I just copied and pasted it, so that's why it's all bold on here. Um, at this time, I'd like to make a resolution to accept the material terms of the subdivision settlement participation forms consistent with the terms of the Allergan, CVS, Teva, Walmart and Walgreens settlement agreements. Whereas Hinckley Township is a political subdivision of the state of Ohio, formed and organized pursuant to the Constitution and laws of the state of Ohio. And whereas the people of the state of Ohio and its communities have been harmed by misfeasance, nonfeasance, malfeasance and committed by certain entities within the opioid pharmaceutical supply chain, which include the pharmacies and manufacturers. And whereas the state of Ohio, through its attorney general and certain local governments, through their elected representatives and council, are separately engaged in litigation seeking to hold companies within the opioid pharmaceutical supply chain, which include the pharmacies and manufacturers accountable for the damage caused by their misfeasance, nonfeasance, malfeasance. And whereas the state of Ohio, through its governor and attorney general and its local government, share a common desire to abate and alleviate the impacts of the misfeasance, nonfeasance and malfeasance through the state of Ohio. And whereas Hinckley Township approved the One Ohio Memorandum of Understanding related to the allocation and the use of proceeds of any potential settlements described at a special meeting held on July twenty ninth, twenty twenty one. And whereas settlement agreements have been presented to the state of Ohio and local governments by Allergan, CVS, Teva, Walmart and Walgreens, collectively the settling defendants, to resolve governmental entities' claims in the state of Ohio using the structure of the One Ohio MOU. And whereas Hinckley Township agrees and understands that the five separate settlement agreements, which include Allergan, CVS, Teva, Walmart and Walgreens, will be binding on the settling states, settling defendants, participating subdivisions and the participating special districts. Which include Allergan, CBS, Teva, Walmart and Walgreens will be binding on the settling states, settling defendants, participating subdivisions and the participating special districts. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Trustees of Hinkley Township Medina County, Ohio, that section one, the Board of Trustees of Hinkley Township hereby consent. To the proposed settlement agreements with Allergan, CBS, Teva, Walmart and Walgreens. And the board hereby authorizes the Medina County Prosecutor. To indicate Hinkley Township's consent to its participation in the proposed settlement agreements with Allergan, CBS, Teva, Walmart and Walgreens by executing any required documents the township's legal counsel. Medina County Prosecutor's Office finds to be appropriate. Section two, it is hereby found and determined that all formal actions of this board and of any of its committees concerning and related to the adoption of this resolution were adopted in an open meeting of this board. Or committees and that all deliberations of this board and any of its committees that result in such formal action were in meetings open to the public in compliance with the law. Section three, this resolution shall be in full force and effect form and immediately after its adoption.
Second.
Moving seconded by Asher.
I'm coming, yes.
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 Thank you.
And then you can make a cut. Who's going to send this to Heidi?
I can send it to her. That's no problem. Yep.
Did anybody go online and enter anything as a payee for the state of Ohio regarding this?
No.
I mean, I'd already done it. There was a weird email that came through and Suzanne notified me of it.
When I spoke to Heidi, she said it's. They were sending that out to everybody. And she said it's.
No, 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 it wasn't that. It was something about setting up the payer account. And I didn't know if anybody had independently done something like that because it was my incorrect email. And there's already an account set up. So I'm just finding why this thing bounced back. To the township if anybody had gone into the portal and done anything.
No, I don't know that I have access to.
No, I would think if someone would have had. Attempt to create a new.
It's not the I D me one, Ohio Treasury.
No, it's not that one.
Okay. All right, I have petition for annexation on my agenda. I notice we all do. So I'm going to just skip that one. Really quick and let everyone know two very important things. The Citizen of the Year nominations are due. By March 22nd. So if you have not written a nomination letter and you would like to, you can email it to me and send it to me in the mail, whatever is easiest for you. And also buzzer day is Sunday, March 19. And that is all I have.
I have a question. What happens if the person I want to nominate for Citizen of the Year is on the committee that chooses the Citizen of the Year?
That's a very good question and it has happened before. And what we have done is we asked that person, we tell them that they've been nominated and we ask them just to step away for the year and. Come back the following year. You're welcome. I'm going to miss that picture on the wall, to be honest.
All right, um. I just wanted to remind everyone in the township that as of February 3rd, we have started a new year with our Kimball contract. Therefore, the new rates that will be in effect for this year is $69.99 a quarter for the unlimited service, which is 23.33 a month. The bag service is 22.83 a quarter or 7.61 a month. Bags are $3.31 per bag or $33.10 for a roll of 10 bags. And also a reminder from Lynn in the office. Please remember to pay your bill for Kimball. We just got the delinquencies. With the new year of the contract, it's very easy. I went there today trying to sign myself up, but I still don't have an account number. You can sign yourself up for the automated. Payment on their website, which is kimballcompanies.com. And that's what I have for Kimball. And then the annexation, do you want to wait to discuss it with you or you want me to tell you what I've got so far with it?
It was a placeholder for me for both of us.
I was going to say, are we planning on going into executive session for that conversation at all? Just curious. Okay. That's why I waited. I didn't know.
Yeah, I don't, we don't need to go into executive session. Everybody was copied on the. Letter from the prosecutor to me today. I did speak to a couple of. Attorneys. Over the last two weeks. Trying to find one that was not the $500 an hour and $20,000 retainer. I actually was referred to someone who represented the township years ago. But he could not represent us because he also represents Pride One and them being. A border of the property with the petition. He thought it would it would create a conflict of interest. So he referred me to another attorney. His name is Al Schrader. And this is his specialty. He specializes in real estate. Law and annexation. He's far more affordable. His typical rates are $300 an hour. But for government, he reduces it to $250 an hour. He has. Handled several annexation requests. Both of the attorneys I spoke to all feel that there is. Definitely a potential conflict of interest with the prosecutor representing the township and then also representing the county commissioners. So I just wanted to present this to both of you to see if this is the direction we would want to go. To hire outside counsel. He is available to meet with us as soon as this Friday. On Monday, the 27th or Friday, March 3rd. If we decide to go that route.
Was there any preliminary opinion that they could structure an objection that would be effective?
I discussed some possible objections with him, which he thought were. Realistic.
Do we know what his historical? Ratio is for winning cases like this?
No, he was supposed to send me a resume, which I had, I was just speaking to him when I walked in. For the meeting tonight, I have not received his resume yet. But he, um, I like that he has, you know. The availability. The other attorney who I spoke to who represented the township years ago. Is the one who recommended him. He said this is. This is his area of specialty. And he highly recommended this one.
So in speaking to him, what? What are Hinkley's options and or chances? Just out of curiosity sake.
I did not ask him what our chances are. We talked about possible objections and he seemed to think that they were realistic, what I was thinking for objections. So. You know, he recommended that we, if we're going to go with him to meet as soon as possible and we can go into executive session and discuss objections. And our chances.
Well. As an aside, I spoke with Steve Ferris from Drug Mart. Their head person on this. And asked, you know, is there, what could we do? That might. Have an effect on their decision to request this and to. Let it go away. And. He said, with all due respect, the short answer is there's nothing you can do. So. They. Said they came to the table. And. They were rejected. So they looked for a different avenue. With that being said, by the end of the conversation. I believe that the only thing that. In my opinion, that would be conducive to getting them to look at anything. Would be to match the Brunswick offer and to do that, we would have to get the schools. To agree to a 100% payment in conjunction with Hinkley.
Which is what I recommended September 20th of last year.
You would have to get the schools on board. We can't make that decision.
But we, but what I was pushing for at the last meeting was negotiation so that we could. At least compile what our terms were so we could negotiate with Drug Mart and schools so we could effectively avoid annexation. I thought we were waiting on that negotiation and the conversation with Drug Mart until we got counsel.
That's I. I do not, I know that you brought that up. I do not. Recall the word renegotiation being mentioned at all, which is why we voted.
I didn't say renegotiate. I said negotiate so that they would pull the petition and keep Hinkley intact.
Well, right, but that didn't happen in September.
No, I, but I said negotiation at the last meeting. I was trying to get us to agree to terms so we could go back to Drug Mart.
Agreed, 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 which is why we had said. I was going to look at talking to the prosecutor and outside representation because. I do not think, and I think Martha is the one who brought this up, we should not be talking to the school or Drug Mart. I think that there should be. Legal representation, talking to the school, talking to Drug Mart. I, that, that's where I thought we were at with it.
Where I thought we were at, but we're talking to Drug Mart now.
I did, yes.
I think we need to pursue outside counsel if the prosecutor feels that there's a conflict of interest between his office and that of the county commissioners. I'm confused about this whole thing. There, we decided at the last meeting, we weren't going to negotiate. And we weren't going to have any conversation with Drug Mart until we had an attorney. And now we've had negotiations or conversation with Drug Mart. I'm confused about the fact that I reached out to Bethany Dot Wiler and she said after the September 20th meeting, when I said that our best strategy to prevent annexation was to bump up our C R A. And to match Brunswick at 100%. That she wasn't told that I had a change of heart.
She just, she just, she and I had a conversation. Was Bethany was told. She was the board agreed to.
She was told about the vote, but she wasn't told that about my change of heart that day. It was clear. That I had talked to.
I don't, I don't understand what your point is.
My point is you are the liaison who's supposed to be communicating to Bethany on our behalf. And you didn't tell her that I had a change of heart and that I thought that we should up our.
I told her we had, you had a change of heart. It's not what I was told in the email from her. Well, I cannot speak to the email, Melissa. What I can speak to is the fact that I told Bethany there was a change of heart. And that we revoked and it was a two to two to one vote.
To keep the.
To go to the 50%. That it was, that is what was voted on.
There was no.
And that is what I communicated.
There was no additional conversation with her about the fact that.
What difference does it make?
May I interrupt just for a moment because Brian Richter called me on Thursday based on the number of conversations he's had, I guess, with members of the board. He wanted me to forward him the meeting minutes of the September 20th meeting. And there was a vote. And the vote is clear. That it was a 50% abatement in that zone. It was not, he asked me if it was specific to Drug Mart. It was not specific to Drug Mart. The motion was for. That C R A zone. So therefore, Melissa, if there had been a vote that indicated your 100% preference, that would be an entirely different situation. But what our county prosecutor can go by and what Bethany can go back to anyone interested in the post 94 C R A zone. Is what the board voted on.
This board needs to do a better job of communicating.
Melissa, it doesn't matter what happens. I said this a million times.
That's all I'm saying. That's all I'm saying. We were, I'm not talking about Facebook. I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about right here.
Is journalized in the minutes and what the board decides.
Which is journalized in the minutes shows that the reason that we were talking about adapting the C R A was specific to Drug Mart. It shows that in the minutes.
Does not. That is not the motion.
No, it's not. It's not the motion. It was the meeting before that.
Well, exactly. And I sent everything.
And I read this at the last meeting. It says, Ms. Ashel presented, this is on September 6th, this Ashel presented a drafted C R A tax abatement example she had prepared with Medina County Economic Development Director Bethany Detler in response to the discount Drug Mart. Tax abatement request. It was in response to. She didn't go back and email Drug Mart about our vote on September 20th because it wasn't in response to them.
I can't tell you. You guys could have voted differently. I'm just stating what the actual thing is.
I was trying, which I thought I was very clear on, I was trying to. Come up with a new scale of what I thought. Would be a good fit for the township in the C R A zone.
And it was the exact opposite of the current scale. When it came to the anything over $2.5 million, which pushed Drug Mart out. Which is why we had conversation and I said, if we want to, we want to fight annexation, our best strategy is to meet Brunswick's annexation at 100%. Now I know we have to get school approval. I know that we weren't in the position to make that determination. But. I had a change of heart. I said that publicly. I had screeched out to past trustees. I had talked to people in the county. I had talked to people in Brunswick. I talked to Grant Angst over there who's the economic developer and found out that their C R A is 100% for the entire city. The entire city, not just the zone.
I, I'm still not understanding your point. It's fine. I'm, I'm not, I'm not understanding that point.
Communication here, whether it's here at this table or via email, the last meeting, we said we weren't going to reach out to Drug Mart. And now all of a sudden. We've reached out to Drug Mart. We need better communication here. That's all I'm saying.
I don't think anyone is disagreeing that that is what was communicated to. I don't think that's a communication issue.
A lot of time and this, this has become a big mess. Our timeframe is very small. If this is an attorney that you are. Preemptively looking at and think is going to be a good fit for us, I would love to see his resume. I would love to make a motion to hire him pending our approval of his resume. We need to move.
Which is exactly what I had said at the last meeting, which is why I wanted to be proactive with this. I just, I guess, I, there's no resolution to. What you just created and there's just these statements out there now of this board needs to do a better job of communicating. You are telling me I need to be a better liaison. I communicated exactly what I was supposed to communicate. I don't understand. You've mentioned conflict before. I don't understand. What it is that you're trying to accomplish. I think that.
It's quite clear. You look at every single, every single time you voted on the C R A, you voted no.
I'm not denying that, Melissa.
Through January of this year organizational meeting minutes, you voted no.
Absolutely.
In my opinion, and this is just my opinion. I'm, I feel that this is an egregious act and that you didn't want to tell Bethany that I had a change of heart. That's just my opinion. But I don't know for sure what happened.
That. Is a very loaded statement that you are making. I let Bethany know. From the beginning that we revoked on it and it was a 50% abatement.
It doesn't matter. It's water under the bridge now. We need to move forward.
All right.
Do you like to make a motion to hire the attorney?
Do we want to do a pending thing as resume? I mean, we don't know anything about this guy.
No, because you're going to have to violate executive session. You have to discuss it. How are you going to discuss it?
We can all respond back to you. We can all respond back to.
Not work that way, folks. Sorry.
We don't know anything about this guy except that he was recommended by who?
John Slater. John Slater represented the township for a number of years in the 90s. He's a very reputable real estate attorney. And he's done a lot of work for the township.
I would like to make a motion to hire attorney Al Schrader to represent the township. In the petition for annexation.
Second.
Seconded by Augustine. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
And if we need to call a special meeting, I'm going to need heads up on that. So if you can dial in a date and a time, I would greatly appreciate it.
Okay, let's do that right now. Is anybody available on Friday, the 25th, Monday, the 27th or Friday, March 3rd? Is anybody available on Friday, the 25th, Monday, the 27th, or Friday, March 3rd?
Friday is the 24th.
Do 27.
Saturday's the 25th. If he's available Saturday, the 25th, I can be here for that.
I can do 27.
The 27th?
What time?
He said he is available all day.
Can we do the afternoon? Or first thing in the morning, like 8 o'clock in the morning?
Would that work for you, Jack? He actually said mornings are better.
Perfect.
8 a.m. I will contact Suzanne about a special meeting. And I will email him.
And will you let the prosecutor know?
I will let the prosecutor know.
I'd like to thank Monique for all her efforts in researching this and talking to the prosecutor and finding counsel to reach, retain for this matter.
Thank you, Martha. I'm happy to do it for our town. Thank you for referring John Slater.
Anything else, Monique?
No.
The only thing left on my list, I had that emails you saw going back and forth about EMA. All I know there is that the now he's working on some kind of agreement there. But it has not been finalized.
What is?
The board representation on EMA, whether it's the makeup of the board.
Oh, the executive board?
Correct.
There were about 40 emails.
I fortunately only got about three.
Forty emails.
The road repair agreement with North Royalton is sitting at the prosecutor's office. I thought we'd have it back. I was incorrect. Election Day is May 2. Just keep that in mind. I don't know if we want to postpone or cancel the meeting for that day.
Second, oh no. May I just say that that is the day we were supposed to present the citizen of the year? Is it possible to maybe hold it in the old fire station? You can just advertise that we're not going to have a virtual option. Or you can just do it from my computer and we can all log on and they can see our little faces.
Well, I mean, we have plenty of time to discuss what we're going to do on that day.
We have two more items down on here. One is just take note of the email that Martha sent out about Otarmah. And if your folks need to reply to anything on there, please make sure they do.
Is the board going to do the driving in strength?
Yeah, I know that you had it on there. Any discussion about that, folks?
Whatever you guys want to do, I've been doing it for the last two years. I'm happy to do it again if you want. It's for basically, the brunt of them are obviously police and fire. We've done them the last two years and not really seen any.
We have to do them.
Okay.
We have to do them. And I did it for 14 years before that. So if it's another something the board does. I mean, for that matter, you can have administrative staff do it.
I just.
Or you can have the department heads do it. You can.
Well, that's what I did. I gave it to the department heads.
Do it any way you'd like.
All right, an agreement that we will do that, the department has handled it.
Sure.
Yeah.
So someone will just have to outline the one they have to be returned. And then the forms, I, I think I sent you all the link to the forms that are required.
I try to fill them out preemptively for them because it gets tricky. They don't, I'll know how to fill them out. They forget. Is there any way we can make a decision on that May 2nd? Because I need to let my committee know for presentation purposes.
Did you say the forms were in here in this email?
In the email, there's a link.
Oh, the link, okay.
I, I don't like preparing the form and then you guys can just determine the timeline of how, and checking to make sure they're accurate.
I would prefer we not cancel the May 2nd meeting just because I will not be here for the 17th.
Uh, I'm not going to be here for the 16th either.
16th.
Do you want to cancel the 16th? We have to. Either one of us are going to be here.
Monique can go first.
Be the quickest meeting ever, so. And everybody would be smiling.
So what do you want to do with the second?
Or we could make it.
You want to move the second or?
We could move it to May 9.
And then you have to alter your organization.
Well, we could just call a special meeting. It wouldn't be a, or we can do, just do May 2nd and cancel May 16th, do May 2nd in the old fire station base. Like old times, COVID times.
Our, our little family here.
Yeah.
Do it with the police station, fire station, or the old people.
Wherever you want to do it, but we've got to be able to get a lot of people in for the citizen of the year.
Well, yeah.
So the old fire station bay is a good fit.
All right, you decide where you want and we'll still have it.
Okay.
That's, we can't zoom it though there, right?
Well, that's what I was saying. We could all just pop on our computers and still offer a virtual. It'll just be us individually instead of the room.
Zoom it from a laptop.
Yeah, that's what I mean, all of our computers. Like I'm in right now.
All right, so no meeting on the 16th. Perfect. Look at us communicate.
Can I ask, so as far as paying bills on the 16th, is everybody going to be gone for a week? Or what's gorgeous that day?
I will not be here the 13th.
I'll be here.
What's your timeframe, Jack?
I need two signatures on the bills. I just, you can let me know. I just need to know if it's a payroll day.
A payroll day?
I'm not sure, I'm not sure. When we catch up to.
14, 28.
Because there are three Tuesdays in May also.
Right.
It's not the 9th.
No.
So it would be the 16th.
I'm just, I, I just need to know if I'll have two signatures on bills. And if not, I'll have to just try to get as many done in between there as I can.
Will you be here the 13th?
It doesn't, it doesn't, well, if we're not having a meeting, we can't approve bills unless we are. But just let me know what everyone's schedule is. You can do it privately and then I'll figure out, we got time.
Very good. And we, our agreement to cancel the 16th.
16 is canceled.
It's written in pen on my calendar. Cannot erase it.
Last thing is, uh, there is a request out there for comments on our request. Make sure your folks respond zoning and player to anything that they need in there.
Always do. For the Medina County.
Comments for our request.
What is going on in everyone?
There's a lot split.
Oh. So is, is the county planning is seeking comment on our request? Is that, is that what you're saying? Okay.
And actually, all trustees have the ability to comment.
I, I'm just trying to.
Yeah, I'm just letting you guys know that you all have the equal ability to comment if you feel the need to.
You good?
Good.
Yeah, and you're, underneath your packet is a quote from shredded. Somebody, we have about six or seven large garbage, garbage bags of records that were approved for destruction. And so I would, I would like approval to hire this company. They, they will take them off site. They'll shred them off site. That's the most economical. There's nothing, there's no social security numbers. There's nothing that, that can't be taken off site. And they'll give us a certificate of destruction. So it's, it's $230 and change for the initial service. And then I think it's $62.50 per container.
You need three containers.
Um, I'm guessing they're 96 gallons. So I'm thinking it's going to hold about two of the large garbage bags. If, if not, if we just do a amount not to exceed the 187.50 plus the 230 would be five.
I've got 417.80 as a total.
Not to exceed 500?
I would say 500.
Yeah, that's all right.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Augustine, all in favor?
Aye.
And then the current fund status is $7 million, $231,765.03, of which $1,086,426.36 are included investments and $6,145,338.67 are in primary checking.
Thank you, Martha.
And just for public's information, the township financial information has been uploaded to Ohio Checkbook. For those folks not familiar with that, it provides, I think the last five or six years we participated had all the financial information. And you can do it by department, by overall that township operations. Break it down multiple different ways, but I think it's really, who was Josh Mendel? What was he, treasurer? Who was that guy before he was running for something else? I don't know. Is that what he was, treasurer?
Paper boy.
Who is Josh Mendel?
Well, it's under the treasurer's website. I'm sorry, I can't, I don't know who treasurer is right now. Right. That's where you find Ohio Checkbook. That's it.
Thanks for the info.
Are the bills the $25,000 number?
Yes, sir.
Motion to pay the bills in the amount of $25,623.97.
Second.
Seconded by Ashwell, all in favor?
Aye.
Well, anything else for the good of the order?
No, sir.
Any comments from the public? Yes, sir.
We were talking about the township resident offering to help with the water. Can you give us a name of that resident?
I don't have it off the top of my head. Let me see if I have this card here. One moment. Chris Brubaker.
Anything else for the good of the order? Then I'll make a motion to adjourn at 7:54 p.m.
Second.
Seconded by Augustine, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.